Just to the ordinance, this packet that she put in front of you, I think it's helpful to know that our inspectors are out there following this packet today. The only thing that they don't do is assign a value to a graded system. So everything under the Indiana Administrative Code is being inspected today by our health inspectors when they go out there. What we don't have in the ordinance is the corresponding grading system that will go with that. So that's the first change. The second change is the requirement then after we grade for the food establishment to post their grade on their window or on a place identified by the health department after they're graded. So that's the public transparency of the grading system. And then the third change would be adding assessments or fines to re-inspections or mandatory re-inspections for some of our restaurants that fall below a certain grade where we have to either temporarily shut them down or go out there multiple times to ensure compliance.
The penalty, do you think that's high enough?
I don't know. So when we were looking at some of the, you mean the penalty for failure to post like per day?
One seventy point nine last page.
On the ordinance change, yeah, the only fee that's in the ordinance change is a hundred dollars a day, I think, for failure to post the letter grade. I don't know that if that's high enough or not. I don't know how much lack of compliance we're going to get. I can tell you the fees for an annual permit are not very high. So just trying to keep everything in perspective of where those benchmarks are. So on your other document, kind of on the grading scale proposal document, the one that's just the one-page double-sided, we have some potential ballpark percentage-wise estimates for fees for if it's a voluntary reinspection versus required reinspection. And those were based on what we saw other health departments doing as it related to, okay, here's your annual fee, like if you want a voluntary reinspection for the potential of a higher grade, it's going to be a lot higher for that. If you're, we're reinspecting you, it's going to be probably around the same cost as your annual permit. And if it's, if we're just following up on violations, it's going to be less. So we tried to kind of just ballpark it, but we haven't done an in-depth fee analysis yet on any of this. So it's mostly about the concept and then, okay, what are the other components we would need to have in place?
And then where will the grade have to be posted?
So it's laid out in there, but maybe you can remember it more. It's within certain feet of the door and drive-through windows.
Yeah, if it's not open to the public, drive-through window. If it is open to the public within a certain amount of feet, I'm going to say it was six feet of the point of entrance. And if it wasn't clear, obvious point to the public, then it would discretion the health inspector.
It's like if you've got just two glass doors coming in and then it's all wrecked, then would they have to post it on the door?
Yeah, so whatever would be the most feasible location in any event, a typical wall section wouldn't be there. And like I said, because of a lot of the restaurants not having dining rooms open on weekdays, we would utilize drive-through windows for that.
I have a couple of questions. Brad, I'm sorry, Brad, are you done? A couple of questions, kind of more of a point of reference. Prior to us establishing our own health department, how many restaurants were being inspected by the county? Do you have any data on that?
So we currently have over 700 food facilities, not just restaurants, right? Food trucks, gas stations, farmers markets, over 700 operators that we inspect. I don't know that it's significantly different than what was previously there before we existed. We do hear quite frequently from operators, or we did in the first year or so of operation, that they hadn't been inspected in quite some time. So we've been, you know, working quite hard to catch up and make sure that everyone has the best opportunities to get the best education available to know what they need to do to improve.
So if the food, the restaurateurs were saying they had not been inspected, is that what you're saying?
For more than one year.
More than one year. And how many, are we inspecting every food facility?
We're inspecting everyone for at least once a year and frequently more.
And I like the idea of it being right on the front door. I think that makes a lot, I mean, I want to be able to walk up to a restaurant and know whether I would need to do an about-face or go in and enjoy a meal. So again, thank you, thank you for everything you're doing for us.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's quite popular typically among consumers and among some of the higher-performing operators.
Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead.
Please, thank you for your work on this. I do have a few questions. One, can you just, I understand this is being presented to city council today if we're talking about adjusting our city ordinance. So that's the authority of the city council. What is the authority, two questions here. What's the authority? How does the Board of Public Health even as the authority to this as well as if a restaurateur has a complaint about the performance of the inspection or the results of the inspection? How does that, can you help me just kind of work through like the authority and who oversight, that oversight system?
I can, I think it might better come from Chris.
Go for it, I'll jump in.
Okay. So the Board of Health on this particular issue doesn't have any formal authority other than to provide guidance. So we've presented it to the health board last week for their, and we had quite a robust discussion actually, which resulted in a fair number of changes to our proposal, to our initial proposal, just to say, okay, well, let's make sure there's a mechanism that people, if they feel like their grade was unfairly given or they wanted to really work towards that higher grade, here's the mechanism that they can use to do that. So they, in this particular instance, provide that guidance. They're our checkpoint to say, okay, we've discussed this from a health and sanitation with our experts, which include physicians, veterinarian pharmacists. Yeah.
That's what I was hoping you'd say, that's, those are our health professionals that are closer to this than someone like me.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, and then, I'm sorry, what was the second part of the question?
Well, and then the city council approves the ordinance.
The ordinance and the fee schedule.
And the fee schedule. Okay. My other question was, has, I'm knowledgeable about the Indiana Hotel, excuse me, Indiana Restaurant and Lodging Association. Do they check this out and like review it?
So I don't know that they're, that the whole association checks it and review it, but we do have a call set up with our local operators to discuss this further.
Like they want our restaurateurs to pass, right? So if we can work with them.
Yeah, and that's why we always have had a heavy focus on education because just dinging them and, and, you know, closing them for a day isn't in the long-term interest of anybody. So that's why our approach has always been, let's do a lot of education so that they know exactly what they need to do to get up to standard and to make sure that we're offering safe food to people.
Good, thank you.
Just to elaborate a little further on that, the FDA also has representatives that are available to provide clarification in the event that there's a letter grade dispute, violation dispute, things of that nature as well.
And I'm sorry, I do have one last question, just again to provide me context for seeing this for the first time. Are you saying like every health department gets to craft their own like grading scale and fee schedule and?
Kind of, so we all have to do the inspections based on the same points. And those are the ones that are in your document, those are under Indiana Administrative Code. But how, what, we can, we can adopt a more strict municipal ordinance if we want to on some of those points. But as far as whether we're pass fail or whether we assign points or whether we give a grading scale, there's nothing that I'm aware of and that.
No, except for the Administrative Code and Indiana Code does assign a critical or non-critical violation to all these. So Todd, you'd know better than I, but the Indiana Administrative Code on this topic's probably 200 pages long of everything from utensils to food to kitchen cleanliness.
And those are listed on that document, whether they're critical or not, and then we have the waiting based on the FDA.
And my question is, a restaurateur with locations in Fishers and Noblesville and Marion County?
It's the same exact things that they're being scored on, it's just whether they're pass fail or whether they get a grade.
Okay, thank you, thanks for that context. I appreciate that.
I want to just give a kudos. My family was at Subway, we went to pick up some food there, and I just happened to walk in on an inspection that was going on behind. And I didn't even realize what was going on, then I kind of picked up on it, I saw City of Fishers Health Department name badge. And anyways, that gentleman was very polite with the owner of Subway and actually stood aside while the, because it was starting, you know, line was backing up. And he stood aside and let the business go and then he, you could tell he was picking up stuff, you know, and also teaching, which I just know, I picked up on those things where he was teaching along the way. And he wasn't just in there as some auditor just calling out things. So it was, it was really good. And this also helps because you came along and we started this in the midst of a pandemic, right? So the public facing, all they would really see was the health department equals COVID everything, right? And good, bad, or indifferent. And so this is a good, good tool to get to the public to say, hey, this is what's, what a health department brings to a community, and this is just one of the other aspects there. So I just wanted to give that kudos there for what I saw.
We look forward to engaging the restaurant community and then we'll document that feedback and provide it back to you at our upcoming council meeting.
Sounds great.
All right. Move on to council meeting.
Todd, I have a few comments and questions. So with the placard, with the grade point placard, would it be best practice to also include a placard if a establishment has a drive-through to have it required in the drive-through window and in the front of the establishment? I'd like to see if possible both because there's people that may not go through the front and they just use the drive-through. And so they wouldn't really know what the status was. So if that's possible, that would be just a thought. I know in the past, public works, you know, there's been restaurants that violate the grease trap, that they're pouring down the fryer grease and all that down the drain and everything. So will this also be something like the public works could work with you to educate again establishments that they're not supposed to be throwing the grease down the drains and that kind of thing? I know.
I feel like this comes up all the time, yes. Do you have anything to say?
I do, so the fat soil and grease, as we know, the FOG program, it's also part of the permit application. So before we even review the permit, review there's an, we review and make sure there's an annual contract, it's being maintained at the service intervals that it says it needs to based off of the size and capacity of that grease trap. And that is part of the inspection process for the annual inspection from the food inspectors. So yes, will the grease traps be maintained more thoroughly now? I would say absolutely yes.
Because I venture to say that's been a problem in the past with our sewer situation. The other thing is wondering, does this include like restroom conditions that there's soap, there's so many times I go to a restaurant and there is no soap in the.
So restrooms are part of the inspection process for all food facilities, yeah. And they note all of those things and they're all assigned points on there. It's all part of the Indiana Administrative Code.
Councilwoman Cole, I'm glad you brought up the fat soil and the greases, although it may not be the most exciting component of what we do. The fact that we have an integrated public health that could then go address those issues is part of the reason why the health department is so helpful for us is they, because I can tell you for our sewer system, if that's not maintained or managed, it is a disaster in those sewer lines when they get clogged with all the fat soils and greases. So I agree wholeheartedly, appreciate you bringing that up.
Anything else, council?
It's been 30 years since I owned a restaurant, so back then you had to have a number of employees that were trained in safety something.
Food handling, food handling, safety.
Serve safe is the most commonly accepted one, and we offer that training through our health department as well. So we've already gotten quite a number of our food operators through that training and it's something that we consistently offer.
Okay, then.
Good, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Yep.
Onto our, I'm going to go head and call to order our council meeting. Everybody rise for the pledge.
Plead on.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under the individual liberty and justice for all. Welcome to August 15 Fisher City Council meeting. We will move on to department reports, the health department report, which you just got quite a taste of, but you can log on to the Fishers website and they have a report there of the current statuses of everything from COVID to all the other components of the health department in our community. We'll move on to item six, council reports, a finance committee report. John, go ahead.
Thank you, Todd. A few items for your consideration tonight. We have recommended approval on the agenda item seven B on the consent agenda, and item nine. Item seven B is authorizing city control to transfer certain funds. The other one is budget financial, the resolution of us awarding the not-for-profit grants. We also recommended that for approval as well. During our meeting, we had an update on the State Road 37, update on where that's from the construction progress in particular, 141st and State Road 37 and that delay or actually the bids that were rejected, but how that project's going to be worked through. Jason Teller did a nice job giving us information on where we're at with that particular product, project I should say. We also had our folks from our, Fourvis LLP, our audit firm, give us our audit report. And we for, every year we've had this firm do our audit report, what's called in our audit word, what's called an unqualified opinion with what that means, that there were no material misstatements on the financial statements, there may be two or three adjustments to our financial statements. We are not required as a state to use an independent CPA firm, but we chose to to have the best practices with our financial statements. And Lisa Bradford, if you're here, I mean, she's our controller, certainly, great job, another unqualified opinion, and our financial reporting is very strong. So thank you very much. That's all we have for the budget finance committee. It was a pretty cool meeting.
Yep, thank you, John. Very eventful. Moving on to the nonprofit committee report, Cecilia.
Okay, the nonprofit committee met on Monday, July 18 and recommended nine area nonprofits be awarded the grants and for a total of $120,000 to be awarded this year to those organizations. So that will be agenda item number nine.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, do a motion to approve.
Removed it.
Motion by John, second.
Second.
Second by Cecilia. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I abstain.
Celine abstains.
Actually, I have to abstain as well.
And John abstains.
Sorry about that. It's not there.
All right, moving on to item number eight.
Do you need a minute, Tracy?
If you want to have Pete on, yes, I need a moment.
Okay.
Pete's on, he was called in front of you. It's, you're, I just want you right now.
Okay.
I can get him on screen here in a sec.
Yeah.
Apologies for the delay.
Thanks.
We're good to go?
Yeah.
We can hear him if he talks again, but I don't think he'll be able to hear us.
But you know, you know he's on though?
He's on for sure.
Okay. Moving to item eight, R081522B, a request to approve project agreement by and among Rev Fishers LLC, the City of Fishers, Hamilton County, Indiana, Fishers Town Hall Building Corporation, and the City of Fishers Redevelopment Commission.
Thank you. Good evening, council, for the record. Megan Baumgartner, Director of Community and Economic Development for the City of Fishers. I am excited to present this project for your consideration tonight. This has been a long time coming and we're excited to have the Albehor family here with us tonight. They've owned this building since the 80s and 90s. Mike has some incredible stories, if you get a chance to talk to him about his presence here. Pete can't hear anything. And we've worked with him for several years to talk about what a redevelopment of this site would look like that would be accretive to his family, something that they're proud of, but then also is an incredible asset and amenity to the City of Fishers. So to review the entire project, the investment is for a $35 million project. This will include 36 for-sale condominiums. This is our first for-sale condominium project within the city, within our Nickel Plate District. It's right along the Nickel Plate Trail. This is 23,000 square feet of retail and commercial office space. There will be 132 parking spots included with this, a public trail engagement area and pedestrian access to the Nickel Plate Trail, which it's important to note that we will have perpetual and constant access to this Nickel Plate Trail engagement area for the public. And the location of this is south, on the south side of 116th Street where Northern Star is, Tai Sushi, that's the building that we're talking about. Sorry about that. Here are a couple of renderings. So from that first slide, that was looking south towards the north elevation. This is the east elevation of the building on the left-hand side. So it'll be overlooking the Nickel Plate Trail. The green area is what we'll discuss in a moment about the public trail engagement. And then the picture on the right-hand side is the west side of the building, so facing the strip center and commercial area where McAllister's, Crumble Cookies, and Taylor's Bakery are located. One thing that council members have asked for recently, which I think is a great request, is for us to talk a little bit about the city impact that these projects are going to have on the community. So for the existing building, the existing assessed value, so this is land and improvement. So the building's on top of it is just a little bit over a million dollars. If you look at it in GIS and really want to nerd out, you'll see that there's two different parcels. So this is the combined value, and then the annual taxes of those two combined is 23,000 a year. And again, this is off of the full tax rate of what our current tax rate is. The new assessed value with these condo units, retail, the improvements that are going to happen on this property, the new assessed value is estimated as $18.8 million. The annual taxes that will go towards the TIF repayment or the bond repayment are estimated at $365,000 a year. But as we've all talked before, the value of TIF, even though then we get these great projects, the school system actually gets an incredible addition to their tax revenue as well. So since we have our referendum in place, we're estimating the value per year to the schools is 66,000, just about $67,000. And when I went and did the math earlier, right now I think they get about $2,000 of value per year from this property. So in addition to it being an incredible asset, it's also an incredible boost to our assessed value within our community. And then the picture on the right-hand side, that is the concept plan. So it'll go right up against the trail, they're having surface and underground parking and that, the public green space, that'll be on the second floor, which is a public amenity area. One thing that I wanted to drill down into before we go through the entire incentive package are the impact fees. So I broke it down by the type of city fees that we assess for new projects, and these are for residential and commercial, so we can talk about each of those. And then very clearly, is this waived for this project or no, if the developer has to pay for it? So the sewer and stormwater fees, that includes impact, connection, and tap fees. So just the initial fees, they, those are being waived. So that's $99,000 for those initial fees that are being waived. We feel that due to the increased density that you'll see on the site, all of the new users, that the benefit of them not having to pay that upfront fee well pays for itself as, over time, as there are additional users and customers paying into the sewer and stormwater utility. Road and bridge impact fees, those are assessed for commercial and residential, they are paying those fees. Park impact fees, which are assessed for residential projects, multifamily and for-sale, those are all being paid by the developer. Permitting fees, that's for every single project, they're paying those. And also the inspection fees, they'll be paying those. So to reiterate, the only fees that are being waived are the sewer and stormwater fees for $99,000. And then the total incentive package. So we're requesting approval of a TIF bond of $3.125 million, that would be the proceeds for it. The great thing about this one, even though it is a city-backed bond, we do have a minimum taxpayer agreement. And the reason that we weren't able to come to terms on a developer-backed bond is because with the condos, since each of those are individually sold, it gets incredibly complicated with different owners of having their own assessment. So in that condo, just like if you had a townhome, you'll have your taxes that you have to pay, but then the base, the landowner also has taxes. So for us to be able to do a minimum taxpayer agreement for the, that was our way of feeling comfortable with them being able to get the proceeds needed for the project. We're also requesting a public infrastructure grant for right-of-way work along 116th Street. So you'll see from this rendering, right now it's being proposed that municipal drive will cut through the middle of that building. So the traffic signal, excuse me, traffic signal that's there, there's going to have to be significant improvements. And then if you've walked along 116th Street on that side, the, it's a very narrow trail and sidewalk, so all of that will be improved and brought up to the Nickel Plate Code standards. So we do imagine that's going to exceed 500, or that the cost could come in or be above $500,000, but the project agreement states that it will not exceed $500,000 for our grant. And then an easement agreement, again, for that public trail area that we were talking about for engagement, we are requesting a, an annual payment of that to get to $1.75 million. So that's $308,000 that we would pay per year for us to be able to then in perpetuity have access to that space. They would construct it, they would maintain it, but we would constantly have access to it. And similar to what the hotel will have, it'll come up off of the trail tunnel onto that space. And then again, the waiver of sewer and stormwater impact fees, the words in italic are just truly what comes from the project agreement, specifically the capacity, connection, impact, and tap fees associated with just initial construction for $99,000. So this is maybe one of the lengthier reviews and summaries that I have given, but I'd really like to bring up the Albehor family, the development partners with Tony Berkla to give their perspective of what the project means to them and answer any questions that you all might have for them.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm here with the development team tonight to just give you a few brief remarks. I think we'll keep that slide up on there because we may talk a little bit about that entrance. With me tonight is Mike Albehar, the current owner of the property, Paige Petano, his daughter is here, she's part of the development team as well, and will likely outlive all of us managing the project. And Tony Berkla here with Berkla Investment Group. And they just wanted to just say a few words to you, and then if you have any questions for us, we're happy to answer them. Mike?
It's Pat Nero.
And Albert.
That's okay. Megan was very good in describing how excited we are about this project. I mean, I've owned this property since 1986 and I've seen downtown Fishers very sleepy. And my daughter told me not to tell stories, I'm only going to tell one. Back when we bought this building, there were 3,500 people in Fishers. We tore off the roof ourselves, left it in 116th Street for several days, and then collected the trash. There was nobody around. So what we've seen happen to downtown Fishers is amazing, and Tony's vision with this project just blew us away. And it's very exciting to have the team. The city's just been wonderful to deal with, Megan, the mayor. I can't tell you how excited I've been. I think we'll keep that slide up on there because we may talk a little bit about that entrance. With me tonight is Mike Albaughar, the current owner of the property. Paige Pitano, his daughter is here, she's part of the development team as well, and will likely outlive all of us managing the project. And Tony Berkla here with Berkla Investment Group. And they just wanted to just say a few words to you, and then if you have any questions for us, we're happy to answer them. Mike?
It's Pet Nero.
And Albert.
That's okay. Megan was very good in describing how excited we are about this project. I mean, I've owned this property since nineteen eighty-six, and I've seen downtown Fishers very sleepy. And my daughter told me not to tell stories, I'm only gonna tell one. Back when we bought this building, there were thirty-five hundred people in Fishers. We tore off the roof ourselves, left it in One Hundred and Sixteenth Street for several days, and then collected the trash. There was nobody around. So what we've seen happen to downtown Fishers is amazing. And Tony's vision with this project just blew, blew us away. And it's very exciting to have the team. The city's just been wonderful to deal with, Megan, the mayor. I can't tell you how excited I've been. And last point, I've been approached over the years by many, many people, but Tony's group just blew us away.
I don't really have too much to add, other than we really are excited for the opportunity to be a part of the advancing development of Fishers. It's a great city, and I truly think that the development will add even more awesomeness to Fishers. So we're really excited. Thank you very much.
I'm Tony Berkla with Berkla Investment Group. We are a boutique developer. We try to find unique opportunities, unique sites, kind of the main and main sites. And we've had good success with mixed-use projects in other communities here in Hamilton County. One thing that we've heard over and over again, we had great success in Carmel selling out a fairly significant-sized project similar to this. And we kept hearing over and over again, when are you gonna do something in Fishers? When are you gonna do something in Fishers? And so we went out and we really sought opportunities. Steve introduced me to the team, and this is one of the best locations. And what we decided to do is to try to take this to the next level. Create a very unique project on the trail with great access to all the assets the community has. And, and what you see in the renderings is, is what, is what we're really proposing with thirty-six residential units that are gonna range in size between, you know, seventeen, eighteen hundred square feet, can range up to three thousand, maybe even some combined units. It's what we heard over and over again. And I think this project with the mixed-use nature, the retail in the first floor, the office, and then the residential above, will be a shining star in, in, in northern Indianapolis. So we're excited to be a part of the team and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We have a motion, first of all, let's go with this. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move it.
Motion by John, second by Selena. I'll go ahead and open up for comments or questions.
Question, what do you expect your demand to be in Fishers?
So since the announcement was made by the city, we have, we have a webpage up. It's webfishers.com. We've had almost a thousand unique hits to that webpage. And it's mostly in Indiana, but we've had it from New York, Virginia, all over the country. And then on that webpage, we request people to sign a, you know, information request. And we've had almost sixty unique individuals requesting information specific to the condos. Then outside of that, we continue to get additional unique requests on the, on the office and the retail. So just on the residential, which is probably the most unique porcelain piece of this, we have over sixty people, and that's just on the webpage. I know everybody up here's probably had friends and family call and ask, hey, can I get one?
It's our first ad. We're sure there's more to come.
So that's just the individuals who have reached out to us on the webpage. But I know individually, we've all had a handful of folks. So we see, we see a great demand. And we, we feel very confident, even with interest rates going up, we feel very confident that the demand will be strong. That's why we, over and over heard, if you feel something in Fishers, we would love to be a part of something like that.
Well, first of all, I've been wanting condos like this in downtown Fishers. I know Steve can tell you that for a couple of years. At first, people told me I was a lunatic, that those crashed in the last crisis. So I'm very excited for the project because I think it brings a different element to the housing market that we can offer here in Fishers and increases that variety. Megan, I wanna say, you know, I, typically I like the, you know, developer-backed bonds, but given that there's so many different property owners in this, I see, I understand why we had to go at it from this way. But I wanna make sure that I'm understanding. So I'm, I'm waiving ninety-nine thousand of sewer fees, correct?
Correct.
But I'm gonna be getting income taxes on residents that are paying one million dollars for thirty-six apartments.
Correct. I, I don't know the price point, but yes, they will, they will be income taxes.
I'm seeing, I'm writing. So sewer fees, so I'm waiving ninety-nine in sewer fees.
Can I use that slide?
Sure.
That Selena's referring to, please? Well, I meant the summary of the, like, my usual. Oh, I'm sorry. I think it was like two slides before that.
The, the first projects, oh.
Yeah, it's right here. I think that's what the reference is, right?
I think there's two other, there's two other revenue streams that one could contemplate in this project. One is, obviously, every one of these users, both commercial and residential, in perpetuity will pay your monthly sewer fees. So today you maybe have one or two accounts there, and now you're going to have forty or forty-five accounts, depending upon how the commercial lines up. The second component, I think it was interesting to bring up, there is a reality that where you live is where you pay your income tax revenue to. And so to Councilwoman Stoller's point, having people of, that earn a significant amount of income, there is a revenue stream that comes back to Hamilton County collectively, and then ultimately to Fishers, by having people of high net worth pay their income taxes and call Fishers Home. That is, that is how we generate our second-largest revenue stream, which is income tax revenue.
One last statement. I don't know what your plans are for the first floor, but I sent Steve some ideas on Friday.
I haven't seen him.
I'll be happy to look at that.
She's the one you gotta talk to.
Anyone else? Comments? Maybe start down that way and work our way. I'm sure several of you have comments, yep.
Well, I like this project. First of all, you know, I did a constituent survey back in May because I wanted to know what my constituents thought. And what I found was pretty interesting. I think it's pretty accurate that sixty-two percent of all the people that they like went to the way downtown in Belton. I think this project is good at that. Something else that I found was that they don't want apartments. I know that. And, and, you know, thirty-six homes is not a green, a lot of cars, a density. So I appreciate you guys doing something like this. I'm sure you've been here for a long, long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. Can you explain more? It was said the road is going to be extended through the building. Can you help me understand what that?
I, I think that might be, so Mike will tell you this. This is, I first met Mike when he was upset about the way, if any of you have seen the stoplight that's currently there, you have that entrance into his site that has always been problematic from a safety perspective because people are trying to turn left to go in there, and people are turning left out of City Hall. And there's just never been a good solution for the engineering associated with that. And what I was really grateful for to this group is really pushing the envelope on the site plan that said, you know, we're gonna actually create what should be a four-way stop. That's, you know, that you'll literally be able to, to drive in through the stoplight, you'll drive right into the center of their building. Instead of having an access point that's off to the side and causes the same conflict we have today, they're actually going for the more elaborate design from a safety perspective. I don't know Steve or if anyone else wants to comment on it, but I think it's a vast improvement from what's there today.
It's right where the arch is in the middle of the building.
Yeah.
That's where we're proposing that the traffic light goes, and then the traffic flows in and out from there and has direct access to the parking.
It'll be the most dramatic entrance to any project that we've seen yet here in Fishers. You'll, you'll see it right there, it'll be centered right with the city property, and you'll be able to go in and out right there from it. So that's part of the discussion about some of that road right-of-way work is relocating the traffic signals, which we're sure, sure we'll have to do as well.
I'm not sure frankly if I can fully vision that. I, I, I'm, I'm trying to picture that this is dramatically different.
Yeah, you'll drive under the,
From what we're used to, right?
We'll drive under the building, then there'll be surface parking in the back, but then there's also a parking garage below ground that you'll access from South Street.
Okay.
But I think it's important, Councilwoman Bear, and correct me if I'm wrong here, team, the idea isn't that that becomes like a road that you're cutting back to South Street. It's an entrance to the building and parking. So it's probably, we should probably call it more of an entrance to the building than a road being built through the building.
Okay, there you go. There you go, you can see it here.
And, and that then will turn into a four-way stop.
Yes, whereas like today, the Burn Boot Camp people, if you see them, when they turn left, it just, it's, this way it'll all be lined up.
Well, I do have, I, I have two main concerns here, big concerns. And one is just, I'm not clear at all how this fits into the overall vision that we're creating for our downtown district. And one of the most important points about that is, I thought we were, as a team, very prioritized that a walkable downtown district is what we're looking for. I am concerned about the overall traffic in this area, and it feels like, it feels like to me we are building a downtown for cars and not for pedestrians and bikers. So I'm concerned about that. And this is already through our downtown area, in my opinion. It's already hazardous for pedestrians as it is. So that's one concern I have. But I would like to ask the question, can you share with us a little bit, how does this fit in the overall vision of our downtown? Because I have to say, maybe unlike your constituents, I have not heard anyone in Fishers saying that, hey, what we need here is condos that sell for six hundred thousand to a million dollars. I have not heard that. And I have heard that we want a walkable, even more retail-based downtown.
Sure, so I'll take the first question first about the walkable. I truly don't think you can get any more walkable here because every single piece of this is faced and integrated into the Nickel Plate Trail. So for us, having that public engagement area where people will be able to either continue on the tunnel, you know, if you go down the tunnel and then there's the stairs area, it'll be up on your left-hand side. So there are multiple ways for you to get here that is solely focused on pedestrian access. Also here, right now, if you're on the south side of One Hundred and Sixteenth Street, if you're going across the, the trail opening, have you ever tried to walk across there where Burn Boot Camp's coming to try, to turn in, and then people are trying to go into the back retail locations? This now has a, it, you can see it here, that's a pedestrian-focused intersection. So I don't know if you can see it, okay. You, do you see the white crossings, the pedestrian crossings? So that'll be there. So that's reducing one entrance point off of One Hundred and Sixteenth Street. And engineering will typically tell us that the fewer amount of entrances and ingress and ingress points, the safer it is for pedestrians. For the broader, so does that answer the, the, so the pedestrian question?
Yeah, and I wanna be clear, like, obviously our trails are very walkable. It's getting off the trails and moving throughout the downtown district. When there's cars, there's a lot of traffic here. Our downtown is built on one of our main east-west thoroughways.
Sure.
So I just wanna be very thoughtful now as we continue to build and grow in this area that where I really feel like we need to be thinking pedestrian.
So with that, I think the, the ability for everyone on this, on this development to be able to go under the tunnel, that then avoids the, the necessity to cross One Hundred and Sixteenth Street, I think that's why we made that great investment to put that there. So again, we can, we can talk a little bit more about that. But then from the broader vision, the mixed-use development, so twenty-three thousand square feet, that'll be first floor is all retail, so that's probably two to three to four different retail locations. So that could be restaurants, boutiques, it could be a hair salon. So that's where that thirteen thousand square feet is going to go. And I will say, over the last three years, we've probably added forty to fifty thousand square feet of retail space along, or in the Nickel Plate District. So it is, it's in high demand, and we're excited that this is a really key intersection where people will be able to get off of the trail, they can go under the tunnel and enjoy that here. And then the second floor of commercial office space, there, we have no vacancy of commercial office space in our Nickel Plate District right now, just because people do want a walkable urban environment where they can go downstairs and grab a coffee, or that they can walk across the street and go to Parks Place Pub. So I think that environment is exactly what we're hoping for. And this now just provides a for-sale component that we've heard from council is so important to adding some additional housing opportunities within our city. And the other great thing is the parking is all self-contained here, so we're not losing space, which is really important to us for surface parking lots. So we're really being able to maximize the, the space that we have and create a dense and walkable environment with lots of different opportunities for people to get out and enjoy our city.
I'm also, and I think maybe this is for another time, if you have a broader vision conversation, because I'd be very perplexed at this concept that you can create walkability without having people live and work in close proximity to it. Because by the nature of it, then, if you're not creating that density, that means someone's driving there to then enjoy the pedestrian. Where in reality, what you're trying to create, when we talk about, urban planners, when they talk about walkability, they're talking about the proximity of people living and working close to something, so it makes it walkable. We could obviously have very low density in downtown, but then there's no one there to walk around. So the idea here is you create the, the density so that people are in close proximity to walk to it. So you and I could dialogue, you know, down the road on this vision and how you achieve walka- or, you know, pedestrian-friendly components without density.
And, and I do wanna make a distinction between density is different than pedestrian unfriendliness. We can have a dense environment, and we do, and also be more pedestrian-friendly than we are, I'm certain of that. We need, we need a dialogue about that, I think, again, as a council, about what the vision is for downtown. I do have one more question, uh, one comment and one quick question. My comment is that it's just about retail. That is the component that's dramatically lacking in our downtown area. We have created down, uh, retail spaces in our downtown area, but it's not being used for retail. And that is price-point prohibitive for smaller retailers. So my concern about this as well, price point overall is my concern about this project. For, for residents, I think it was already said a couple of times, this is not a residential project for Fishers residents. This is a resident, this is a residential project for folks outside of Fishers to enter Fishers. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, but it is troublesome when we have a housing crisis or shortage right now in our community, so.
Just so I'm clear, Councilwoman Bear, so you're saying there's nobody in Fishers that can afford a condo?
I'm certainly not saying that, but I, I am reflecting some of the other comments that have ever, have, have been made here. And we do know our housing imbalance has to be freeing up the lower end of our housing stock for, for new, you know, younger families and older senior citizens to live. So we know that that's our gap. So if I had one last question about the TIF, so I am grateful for your ownership and land for our community for so long, and you're a business owner in our community, so I thank you for that. I am interested, and this is an opportunity to use your property for something very different and extraordinary, certainly. But for our residents, when we talk about TIF money and providing incentives, to me that means it has to fill, that investment has to fill a community need. And again, I've already stated where I am right now, is I don't see how this fits a community need that we have, nor the vision for downtown, or what would serve downtown, for current Fishers residents.
Okay, I, I might have missed a question that was part of that.
Well, if you can explain anymore, you know, we know that TIF dollars or TIF investments need to be used very wisely. And why, why just, is this project justified to use TIF investment?
Sure, I think that looking at the housing stock that we have in our Nickel Plate District, we've continued to hear from council members that they wanted to see for-sale components, and for us to do it on the limited amount of land, but to really drive value and assessed value and value to our schools, this was, for us, was the biggest value. Since costs are high, development costs, or, uh, development costs, construction costs, supply costs, there is a driving, I mean, there is a fee and a value that needs to be paid to be able to make the project a reality. So for us, it is, it is worth that city investment. So that assessed value and those taxes that we'll get after twenty-five years, those will come back on our tax roll, and most likely the, that will continue to appreciate. So we're seeing So, we're seeing significant growth in our assessed value. So, for us, it is, it's a long-term play, it's a, an immediate benefit to our community. And I think that the, the interests that they have received, that we have received of inquiries, does show that there is a need and an interest.
I'll conclude, and then I'll pass it along, I will conclude with this. We did invest, as a city, invest in a housing strategy or a housing study. And I'm looking at our four strategies, and this is where I'm putting up this project against what the recommendations that we paid for. Quickly, four, encourage development of a variety of senior housing units, encourage development of housing types to attract and retain young adults, maintain a high-quality rental housing stock, and consideration of affordable housing. Those were the four strategies out of this document, out of this professional study that we received a year, a few months ago. So, that's, that's what I'm trying to connect and I don't, I don't see the connection, so.
Thank you.
I just have a comment on that, you know. You know, you know, we did that study and, and I hear what the people that did the study said, but I can tell you that if I'm hearing my people say they don't want affordable housing, they don't want apartments, that's what I'm going to listen to.
And that's your, your responsibility, but as a landlord, remember, I'm responsible to the entire city and what's best for the entire city. So, those two things sometimes work together perfectly, I understand.
Thank you very much, moving on, John, do you have any, or keep going down?
Are you guys done?
We are done.
Okay, just checking. Having been involved on the council in this community for my eleventh year and looking at what the vision of, of the downtown was going to be, and when I, when I ran for office, I wanted to create a downtown that people would want to come back to. Because when I came on this council, there were a number of folks that were growing up in this community and leaving and going elsewhere. Not only were you seeing the younger community move away, but the older community were, were also trying to figure out what's next for them. And, and, and looking at that process, I mean, yeah, there's, the one thing I will say, I have one of my family members who moved back to Fishers. He's also an employee here in Fishers as well, my son. And he's living in a community, actually out by Brad, and they have a nice new home together and are going well. But, you know, I've listened to my, I've got one email, one email that was not in favor of this and the individual just not, is not in favor in TIP at all, has nothing to do with the project, just doesn't like TIP. And that's okay, you know, we're going to have our differences, we're not going to always agree. And that's, that's what councils are all about, we just find a way to figure out how we get this done. But I look at this for, for my age group, I mean, I'm, I was almost ready to sign up myself, just from the standpoint is, I'm getting to a point where I have a home, it's a four-bedroom home with a pool in the backyard, my kids are gone, and boy, it sure would be nice to have a place where I can go to and enjoy, maybe move my, my CPA from there, maybe be able to enjoy a meal there and not have to even get in my car. So, and, and I appreciate where you've been with that building. I've, I've been here since, you know, nineteen ninety-two, so I've seen that building. I'm sure you remember when City Hall was next door to you and you've seen a lot happen, or Town Hall, I should say. This is a great investment, it's a great use of this property, it's right in the middle of downtown. And actually, I look at, yeah, it's, this is exactly what I want in downtown Fishers, exactly, have no doubts. So, I'm in full support of this, thank you.
Thank you, John.
I'm, I'm next. Yes, we did have that housing study, but you got to understand that that housing study was done just recently. These projects take time and they've been in the, in the works for a while now to, to get it right, to get the right project. And I'm in favor of this, I mean, I'm so excited. We've, we've been needing for-sale product, quality, high-end product to add to the housing stock that we already have. And as far as a vision, we, we have that vision, that vision's been laid out for the last number of years since, since we became a city. So, I'm really excited about this and I know a number of people that are ready to, to John's point, to downsize from their, their big house with, with a lot of upkeep to something small, smaller and, you know, walkable area. So, I'm really excited, just, just a couple of comments. I would really like to see more boutiques and more restaurants in the lower level of this project. I, I feel that that would help to help the other side, the retail and the restaurants on the other side of the municipal hall side. So, if there could be a balance and a uniqueness of, of restaurants and boutiques, I kind of feel that that's, could add and, and, and help support what we're trying to do. I'm wondering if the condos, are they going to be, is there going to be an HOA? And is there going to be some kind of requirement that it be owner-occupied? I, I say that because, you know, we've got all these investors coming in and so, you know, well, they buy them all and then rent them all out. And I think what I really would like to see is that they are owner-occupied and, and I understand, you know, that people buy things and they, you know, but I didn't know if there was something that you're working on. I, I guess I'm trying to avoid that scenario of they become all rentals. So, I didn't know if someone could speak to that and I have a couple other questions.
Do you want me to answer that first?
Sure.
Okay, so there, these will, there will be a condominium association. And to answer a lot of the questions, John, you hit it right on the head, we're the demographic that Tony knows wants to be here. From his experience in Carmel with the project, they, the people he was referring to that were saying, why don't you do this in, something in Fishers, were Fishers residents who didn't want to move to Carmel. They want to stay here, the list, we're not going to go through who it's been so far, but it, it, these are, Fishers by and large, will be, the majority will be Fishers residents, cash buyers who want to stay here, but they don't have a place like this. So, we're anticipating these will all, mostly will be coming from that demographic of people like that you just described. And so, we anticipate at this high end that there's not going to be an issue with rentals. There'll be a lot of people that'll probably be, could be lock and leave, that could live here part-time of the year and somewhere else. So, so the answer is yes, there will be a condominium association overseeing the entire development project. And we do, we are anticipating that this is, vast majority are going to be Fishers residents as well, thank you.
Thank you. The other question I had is the parking, the surface parking and the, the parking garage. Do you have a plan set up? Because I know that we, after the depot was created and the garage parking there, a way that perhaps the residents could, could have a sole floor, maybe at the top, and then the lower is set aside for public parking. I, I think in the past, some of these apartment complexes, when we've had the public spaces and the garage, they, they maybe weren't set up as ideally as they could have for public spaces. So, I want to ensure that we have really good access to public parking because we're close to the trail and, and the amenities.
Tony, do you have that nailed down yet on how that lower level, is that going to be just residents? Do you want to answer that question?
I think it'll be a combination of both because of the office parking and the residential parking. I will tell you that I was blown away, bringing our, this is not the first evolution of this plan. It's gone through months and months, months of evolution, meeting with the mayor and Megan. We really brought down the size of the project a little bit because of the parking component. And so, we really focused on the surface-level parking for quick and easy access to the retail, whether it's boutique, boutiques or restaurants, and then looking for the, the parking below grade for the residential. Clearly, at this price point, residents are going to have a desire to have their space, protect it from, from everyone else. And so, we're still working through that last component, but we understand the high demand of a resident buying a, a condo here to have their space and making sure that that's secure for them.
I, I understand, I'd, I'd appreciate if you work with the city to just evaluate how, how the parking layout has, the spaces have been allocated for residents' retail from the other parking structures nearby so we don't make any mistakes that we, you know, later think, oh, we should have done it a different way, but I appreciate it.
Hi, so I understand Counselor Stoller's question regarding the ninety-nine thousand, the waiver of the impact fee and then gaining, you know, all this other revenue. And this may not be the right question for this project, but then, like, for the voluntary annexations, how do they go about getting waivers?
That is separate from this, but for annexations, there's different agreements that we sign with individuals who sign voluntary annexation paperwork and agreement. So, maybe Chris follows up where May and Vukasich can. But for here, this is truly, the, the fee waivers that we're talking about are assessed just for new construction projects. So, it's for residential and commercial. So, if, if someone makes a significant improvement on their house or if on the, an existing property, impact fees can be assessed if it's in addition to what's already been there. But they're kind of two separate, two separate things.
Okay.
Just a follow-up on the parking, because I, you know, a broken egg there, almost went out of business because nobody could park to go there. And that came to me as a city councilman, of course, I was eating there a lot. And the city finally put no parking on the street from three to whatever it was to help. But that is a serious situation. You go and pay the high rent and then the customers can't get to you because of younger generation's convenience. My generation will walk a block, but none of these guys will, so, so. But, but it is a serious thing based on what we have downtown. Those people are not happy with the parking for their customers.
Thank you.
I'll wrap up. I do believe this frees up inventory, housing inventory in Fishers for those that are moving up and, and settling into a new location, creates walkability. I can tell you, I never would have imagined this, so I moved here in eighty-nine, so just three years after you built this. So.
Just about.
Just, and I never would, I've said this a few times, serving in this capacity, but I never would have imagined any of this and to happen in, anywhere in Fishers, let alone downtown Fishers. So, this is very exciting. Also, based on these numbers, I see that the school system will, will be able to add one teacher, looks like. So, this, this project, by voting for it, will add a, a teacher to the school district. So, I appreciate that very much and I'm in favor of it. We have a motion by John and a second by Selena. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Take a roll call?
Okay. Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
John Weingard.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
Go to others and.
Cecilia Cobal.
Aye.
Brad Reiner.
Aye.
Selena Stoller.
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare.
Nay.
Crystal Newman.
Nay.
David Giffel.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
For the first time ever, we can't hear Pete.
He probably, he probably heard that comment, I bet you, of everything that's, that got through. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, congratulations, welcome to Fishers, welcome back to Fishers. All right, moving on to item nine, R zero eight one five two two A, a resolution of the common council for the city officials, Hamlin County, Indiana, awarding the two thousand twenty-two nonprofit grants.
Thank you, President Zimmerman, for the record, Chris Grissel, city attorney. I'm going to be brief and then turn it back over to you all because I think most of you are familiar with the nonprofit grant resolution that's before you today. So, as you know, just as a summary, in January, the council passed a resolution allocating the nonprofit funds. We kicked it over to the nonprofit committee during its July meeting. As Councilwoman Cobal mentioned during her committee report, the nonprofit grant committee recommended funding to eight, was it, committees? Eight or nine committees that are listed before you. And then the finance committee also oversaw this resolution and recommended its approval. So, with that, I'll turn it back over to President Zimmerman and Councilwoman Cobal for further comment.
Thank you very much, do I have a motion to approve?
Aye.
Second. Motion by Jocelyn, second by John, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
And Selena abstains. Moving on to item ten, R zero eight one five two two C, a resolution adopting the fiscal plan for Collins Property Annexation.
Hello, good evening, so this first item is for an annexation, this is for the fiscal plan adoption and then final reading for the item before you. I do not have a presentation prepared for that, but it is just for sewer connection for this property.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Selena.
Second.
Second by Crystal, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On item eleven, R, R zero seven one eight two two.
Yes, and I apologize, I should have mentioned, so I presented, both of those items go together, they're both for the same annexation. That first item you guys just voted on was the fiscal plan and then this one will be for that final reading ordinance.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Selena, second by John, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, motion passes, moving on to item twelve, R zero eight one five two two D.
So, this is a similar item, so I'm going to present twelve and thirteen together. First is for fiscal plan, the second, item thirteen is for the final reading. And this again is for an annexation for a sewer connection of residential property.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Selena.
Second.
Second by Crystal, any questions or comments on this whole, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, moving on to item thirteen, no, yes, thirteen, zero seven one eight two two A, do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Selena.
Second.
Second by Crystal, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, moving on to item fourteen, zero eight one five two two, request to approve voluntary annexation.
Yes, so this one is a little different, this is the public hearing and the first reading for this item, but again, just a residential property voluntary annexation, about five point seven acres.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open this up for a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item alone, step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing no one stepping forward, I'll close the public hearing, do I have a motion for first reading?
First reading.
Thank you. Moving on to item fifteen, zero eight one five two two A, consideration of a rezone for five, five point two seven acres, marketplace.
Yes, so this is for, first reading for a proposed rezone. This is a for-sale townhome product, fifty-three units, it's being proposed by Lennar, who I will turn over to here shortly. But on the bright side of the screen, you see the concept plan. I do want to highlight that the builder was very accommodating of staff's requests on the site plan. And so, all of the garages are going to be rear-loaded, which allows for higher-quality architecture on the front of the facade. So, you can see here, this is the proposed architectural rendering for this product, which staff is very supportive of. We think that looks great. Within the development itself, there's going to be proposed on-street parking. So, you can see that in some of these, in that main kind of north-south drive there, there will be on-street parking. And then, they are showing a stub-street connection to the apartment complex that's just to the east. Our fire department has requested this for emergency access purposes for, to serve the existing apartment complex. Currently, they've got two access points, but it's off of the thoroughfare to the north. And so, staff is going to push for this, we've reached out to the apartment complex, they're not very favorable at this time, but we're going to continue working with them through this process and so hopefully for final reading, we've got a connection there. This is proposed in Fishers District, so you can see here generally where it's located, it's where that arrow's pointing to. I just want to highlight some of the activity or development around this area. So, to the south, we do have two projects under construction, so one is the Learning Center, which is a daycare, and then we also have Bent Grass Lane Shops, so two commercial developments. This is currently a part of the Fishers District PUD and it doesn't allow residential uses. That's why this rezone is bring, being brought forward. And then here's just an overview of the standards they're deviating from, from the UDO's multifamily district. So, this just gives a comparison to kind of our general standards for a similar-type development. They are requesting, requesting lower lot size and lower setbacks, but they are putting forward higher landscaping requirements, so native speed. so native species, um, but also a variety of native species. This is also a mix-up for sale housing types. Um, and then the architecture will be reviewed through the PUD committee. So we are getting higher, uh, quality architecture as well. So with that, I will turn it over to the petitioner, um, who I believe is, uh, Fager Drinker, and then also, uh, Tony Begato with Lennar.
Good evening again, Mr. President, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Fager Drinker. And with me is Tony Begato from Lennar. Uh, Megan did a great job. Uh, Toni and his team have been working with the city on the site plan for many months. Uh, and then the last piece of it since, um, most recently has been, been, the work has been on the architecture. So there was a lot of feedback and guidance from the mayor and Megan and Megan on what the city would like to see and a vision for the architecture. Uh, and so we're really happy to have been able to work that out and be able to incorporate into this project. Uh, and we'd be happy to answer any questions, but, uh, hopefully the information was pretty self-explanatory. These are expected to average about four hundred thousand dollars with the architecture that you're seeing. Uh, and the homes are expected to range, uh, in that seventeen-hundred to twenty-two-hundred square feet. So we'd be happy to answer any other questions for you. Otherwise, we would move on to the PUD committee, plan commission, see you back later. Uh, and we'd be happy to answer any questions now. If you have any homework for us, we're happy to take that too.
Okay. I want to just clarify, the public hearing's at the plan commission, right? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any questions?
I, I do. Um, I know, I'm a stickler on this. I seem like every development, we get the front elevation, but we don't get the rear elevation. So I, I would really appreciate, I just, I just want to ensure that the rear architectural features are just as nice and, you know, it, it makes a difference, I think, for, for retaining its value in the, in the end. Um, just making, ensure that we have that, that quality and that architectural feature. So I would really like to see the, the rear elevation.
And we'll start putting those in these introductory packets. We've submitted that with the file when we filed with the city. And you'll see, these are showing three-story masonry. There's three-story masonry on the sides as well, and then first-story masonry on the back. So that masonry is carried around. Uh, so, but we'll have that all through the, for the PUD committee. And when we come back to you, we'll also, uh, put those in the packet as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What else?
The, I'm sorry, I think I missed it. That estimated price point is what?
Average price is expected to be about four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand. For, and they, these are obviously for sale.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And I'm also, well, sorry. I'm also excited that, again, we have for-sale product integrated with apartments and other types of housing stock. So I'm, I like that.
Thank you.
Is it brick going to go all the way around?
Uh, so the brick will be, as you see, three-story brick masonry here. There'll be three-story on the ends, on the sides, then first-floor masonry on the back, uh, where the garages are.
Okay.
So yeah, right above the garage, you'll have a, there'll be a rear patio at the second level. And then above that, just hardy plank with the windows. And so we do put nice railing on the decks too. Yeah. And I was going to point out, there's other PUD amendments that were done in the past here. Those for the apartments that got built around there, around the neighborhood Walmart Center. So this is the first time to bring in, yeah, for-sale product with this, within this PUD. Again, I know PUD's not generally a fan, but it's already a PUD, so it's basically either a new one or a text amendment. It's kind of semantics on the process. But, you know, we feel this is a good opportunity for some ownership within that PUD area.
Anyone else? Have a motion for first reading?
I'll first read.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. And then moving on to item sixteen, zero eight one five two two B, annual update to the Fishers twenty forty comprehensive plan.
Yes. Um, so excited to present this item, uh, before you all. It's more of a cleanup item or a, uh, just kind of an update for you guys on the Fishers twenty forty plan. So last year, when we went through the first five-year update to the Fishers twenty forty plan, we had put in some, um, I guess, some, uh, features that staff could help track our progress towards the actions that were identified in this plan. And we did that through the summary and implementations chapter. And so this is our first year going through that table and really identifying the progress that we've made so far and highlighting, um, with notes, um, what all has been achieved. So with that, um, I'm going to just provide you guys a general summary. I do want to say, these are all just updates to the existing action items. So there's no new policies or anything being proposed with this plan. It is truly just, um, updating you guys on this progress. But because we're adding text, um, it does require this ordinance change. So each action item does have its own action status associated with it. So that, the actions are broken up into, uh, strategic actions, which are intended to be completed during the plan's lifecycle. And then there's also maintenance actions. So these were, are ones that are going to be ongoing and continued in the future. There's really no end date to them. We're just constantly, um, completing those actions. And so actions, um, that are under the strategic action items, uh, they're either identified as underway, future, or complete. So we're either currently working on them, but we've still got some work to do. Uh, they're future, so they haven't been started, or we've just completed them in their entirety. And then maintenance items are identified as either currently occurring or future. So that kind of just gives you a summary of all these different action statuses. I'm trying to make it as least confusing as possible. Um, so here's a summary of where we're at today. So the strategic actions are identified in blue, and those maintenance actions I mentioned are identified in green. So of the strategic actions, seventy-five are either underway or complete, and there are forty-four, um, that are still to be completed in the future. And then of the maintenance actions, ninety-one are currently underway, and then there are five that identified as future actions. Um, in total, we have two hundred and thirty-one actions identified in the plan. And so within the first six years of this plan being in place, we have, um, there are eighty actions that are either completed or underway. So I think that is a huge accomplishment. Um, it's in the name. It's Fishers twenty forty. So, uh, we are making significant progress towards the goals that are identified. I also just want to highlight some of the signature projects, uh, that have been completed in the recent years that hit multiple action items in the Fishers twenty forty plan. So we have the This is Fishers blog, um, which really helps build and connect our community, uh, through sharing stories. So that's been very successful and something our PR department has worked on the last couple of years. The Makers Playground. So this is not only the new location for our parks department, but it's also a year-round amenity for all ages. So that was something the comp plan focused on, is how do we make sure our park systems, um, can be utilized in the wintertime, but then also through all ages. And so the Makers Playground is a great example of that. Uh, the Nickel Plate Trail, this is a regional trail project, so it will connect to Noblesville and Indianapolis. Um, but also something to highlight is the tunnel under a hundred and sixteenth street. So this was a, um, feat in engineering, um, and something that's been very successful. Uh, we also have our life science projects in Fishers. So our economic development team has, uh, really focused on bringing life sciences to Fishers. So this is investing, again, in that quality of life in our community. And then, uh, the Agri Park, uh, I would say my favorite park in Fishers. Uh, this is a unique community resource. So not only are we partnering with the schools, but we're also focusing on local agriculture and food production. And then the Nickel Plate District AMP, um, which this twenty twenty-two summer series, we've landed some really big names. I've been really excited about those concerts. Um, and it really does continue to be a thriving civic space for events, festivals, and community gatherings. So really exciting stuff, and just want to highlight that, um, I think this has been very successful a couple of years for us. And then something else that we're adding this year is all of our community groups that have been codified. Um, we're building in their strategic actions to the Fishers twenty forty plan. And what this allows staff to do is track our progress, the strategic actions that each one of these committees has identified. So this is going to allow us to make sure that all of these groups are on track and, um, you know, accomplishing what they've set out to accomplish. So excited to add that in there as well. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer. But again, this is really just a cleanup item.
And this is a first reading, just.
That is correct, yes.
May I ask a question?
Yep, go ahead.
Um, the twenty forty plan, I know, is like exactly what we're doing here. It's a living document. We keep, um, enhancing it and perfecting it. Um, we know for, not only for me and probably the other members of the council, as well as residents, like it's our center, right? Like, that, that is our, our vision. Um, I think my struggle earlier in this meeting was specifically about the housing part of the twenty forty plan, since we're cracking open the twenty forty plan and enhancing it and perfecting it. I was reminded that when we approved it, um, the new version of it was approved, I think, last June. And at that point, we said, even though the housing committee met, so I'm, I'm talking specifically about the housing chapter now, when the housing committee met to inform the new version of the twenty forty plan, um, when it was approved by this body back in June, the decision was made to strip out what the housing committee recommended because we were, um, we hadn't yet perfected or executed this document, the housing study. And we said we would go back to the twenty forty plan and add in the results of the twenty forty plan and create a housing task force, so that we do have a clear strategy and center in the housing area of our community and that vision. So, um, my, my question and my hope of, of this body is to, as long as we're making changes in the twenty forty plan and we haven't, um, added in the new information about housing, I'd like to go ahead and do that now at the same time. Add in the new information about the housing.
The, the housing study you want to add in?
The housing study. So what we had agreed upon in June, last June, when we passed the twenty forty plan, was execute the study, get the results, also create a housing task force to hone in on our strategies and, and re, um, reapply that to the twenty forty plan. We have not done that.
And we did establish the housing task force, um, who led the housing study.
I'm so sorry. You're absolutely right. We absolutely did. So, so then, okay, thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. Um, so then indeed, it should be time to introduce back into the twenty forty plan these findings, as we said we would do last year.
Okay. And I, so when we presented on the housing study back in February of this year, um, we presented, I think, to this body in January and then also in February. There were two work sessions. Um, and the direction at that time was to, uh, allow you time to digest that information and then provide recommendations. And so, uh, from staff, we just haven't heard, uh, any recommendations from this body on what to include in that Fishers twenty forty plan. This update is meant to truly just be an annual update, but I think if we want to add in strategic actions, um, I guess I would look for direction from all members of this body in order to add those in there.
Well, then that is something we need to take action on.
So what I would recommend then, as this goes to plan commission, is that be, as well-presented as an idea, uh, a recommendation. Would, would you rec, would you say that's the next step on this, or, or go through this process?
Counselor President, what I, what I would recommend is you bifurcate this a little bit.
Yep.
Since this group, you, you heard the, um, recommendations from the task force.
Right.
You saw the study, but there was no endorsement of the four pillars of that.
Right.
From this council. You guys all wanted to take some time and digest it, look at the data. So my recommendation is that maybe a work session in a council, we bring those back.
Yes.
And answer any questions anybody has, or talk through that at some point. And then you can decide what course of action you want to take. But I think Megan's relatively kind of routine update of the comp plan or updating you right now. I don't know that you need to pair the two.
Right.
But we could certainly bring the conversation back to all of you for further discussion and exploration as to what you want to do moving forward.
So we can figure out the timing on that, based on?
Yeah, whenever, whenever.
Everything else going on that we have sometime this fall.
Yep.
To bring that back for, for the work, a work session.
So Jennifer, could you add that, um, action item to our meeting minutes so that we can refer back to that? And, um, that sounds like a good, good next step. So thank you. Again, I totally appreciate it. I was mushrooming what you're presenting to us, but it really did trigger me, like, wait a minute, that twenty forty plan, we hadn't closed that circle about housing. And that's what tripped me up earlier today, is not quite understanding where we were as a community and as a body, um, of our strategies and priorities in housing. So thank you.
Understood.
Sounds good. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Megan, I, I just want to commend your staff for, you know, working on this and, and keeping up with it. And, I mean, this was something that was very important when we became a city, to have a working document, a, a strategic plan. And you guys have done a phenomenal job. And I think it's a testament to why, uh, we were re, recently ranked seventh best city in the United States to live in, um, twenty twenty-two. So congratulations and thank you for everything you're doing to, to make that a, a possibility for our city.
Thanks. And I'll just add that, you know, Ross and I, we put this table together, but we certainly didn't accomplish everything that was in this plan. So when we were putting it together, uh, I was kind of in amazement of all that we had accomplished, um, as a city.
Absolutely. Well done.
Megan, I have a question. Um, there is a road from USA Parkway that runs near Summerfield to, that, that is planned to connect to Summerfield. How do I get a road removed off that map that, that's in the plan?
Well, I would say that would be a good conversation for our engineering director, Jason Taylor, uh, who is the expert on how traffic patterns work and what road improvements are needed.
Okay.
All right. First reading, thank you very much. We don't have any unfinished new business. We're going to open up for community comment. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes to speak.
Hello. I'm Sarah Schmidt. I live in Fonds Brook and have been in Fisher since nineteen eighty. Um, so I'm a real old timer. I do find some of these new things exciting. Um, but I have a topic that I haven't heard discussed, and you're talking about a twenty forty plan for the city. And I am very concerned about climate change. Um, I know we have a group that's working on it. I understand that you're meeting, um, but I haven't heard any recommendations come out of it. I haven't seen any public, um, records or, um, committee notes. Um, and I, I want to know what Fishers is doing. Um, I have a list of ideas, excuse me, but I'm sure all you young people have many more ideas than I do. Um, but, um, we need to be working on this. It's an important, for our grandchildren, for me, grandchildren. Some of you may have them someday. And, um, how are you going to lead our world and our community? Uh, it's urgent. We need to do something now. Um, are, are we building buildings? Are, are buildings well insulated? Do they not leak? Are we adding solar panels? I know we've done that to some schools. Are we considering green designs for our buildings so that they maximize the sunlight? Um, is the city considering buying electric or hybrid vehicles? Are we adding electric vehicle charging stations? Um, we have areas we could do this. Uh, we talk about planting trees, but I think Fishers is behind on this. Everywhere I go in Carmel, even Indianapolis, you drive down Keystone right now. Indianapolis has new trees planted, the whole Parkway. Um, I think Keep Indianapolis Beautiful is doing a big part of that. And so some of that is privately funded. Um, but, um, we could have a Keep Fishers Beautiful group that's donating money for trees. I've been, people who know me know I've gone on and on about cutting down the trees at the library. Um, and I hear, you know, well, we're planting a hundred new trees. A hundred new trees doesn't equal even ten old trees. Um, set goals to be carbon neutral. And I think Carmel has done that. And, uh, I know we don't always feel like we have to keep up with Carmel, but we could work on this. We could have a program to pick up green trash, leaves, sticks, grass. Um, I have a daughter living in Queens, New York. They put out a little brown container with their kitchen scraps that gets picked up. We could do that. If Queens, New York could do that, Fishers could do that. We could reduce our grass plantings. People who worry about environment now think grass is not a good thing. Many of you probably know that, that grass is not a good thing. We cut it, we fertilize it. The fertilizer runs off into our water supply. We spend our weekends cutting it. We put down, um, weed killers, which are toxic for the environment. So instead of planting grass, we could plant, um, native plants or perennials that look pretty and don't require that. So I hope you'll take some of those things into consideration. Thank you, ma'am. And work on a better environment for our children. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Uh, just to comment on that briefly, uh, Debbie Mayor Holgren's heading up our internal team to develop a climate action plan that addresses a number of the issues that, uh, this woman brought up. And, um, our intentions are to bring that forward as soon as we have it developed. But you want to give just a brief update on that?
Yeah, I would. And I'd ask, Megan, is, are there green leaves on that updated twenty forty comprehensive plan? So, uh, ma'am, if you go onto our twenty forty comprehensive plan and, uh, the updates that you'll see from that, there's a little green leaf, uh, next to several of our strategic initiatives, uh, that directly address our climate action plan initiatives to date. Um, so that's kind of our current state, and then we are continuing, uh, further from, um, some climate action plan initiatives as well. But if you go to that twenty forty comprehensive plan and look for the green leaves, it'll show a number of those.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Seeing no one else, I'll close community comment. Do I have a motion?
Al, Ellie, can I talk about you?
Yes.
Okay. If you'd come forward and sit in the forward seats, please.
I'd like to introduce, uh, Ellie and Al Kuchar. They, uh, live in Britton Falls. Uh, I golf with Al on Fridays. Uh, he is a better golfer than I am. But the things that have been happening in the United States have been horrible, especially the. The shooting in Greenwood, where my granddaughter works, Richmond. But Al and Ellie's family lives in Highland Park, Illinois, and they went up to visit their kids on July 4th and were there at the parade when the killings started. Seven people were killed. Ellie was shot in the leg. Her other relative standing next to her was shot, but went through the pants, but didn't hit him. The gentleman standing next to Al was so bloodied, they thought Al had been shot. I wanted to recognize them as survivors, Fisher's residents, and I want to thank the Fisher's Fire Department for reaching out. For these two, the rest of their lives will be mending, and anything we can do as Fisher's residents to help them mend and get back mentally is what we're here for, and I thank you two for showing up tonight. If there's anything you would like to say, you're welcome to, but you don't have to. Thank you very much. Al, I know you're a better golfer.
Yeah. The Senate has a ban on assault weapons that Eli and I have been championing. There's no reason, we don't have people walking around with a ton of bombs. The weapon that shot Eli and killed those seven people and wounded forty people was meant for military police, and it's not, it's not a money weapon, it's meant for killing people. So I don't wish you would all take a look at that. I was on the other side of the fence until that happened, so that's all I can say.
Thank you. We're very humble for the grace of God. I'm doing very well, very humbly, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. As we go forward in these days, it seems like it's worse and worse every day across our country, and so in Fisher's, I'm sure I can speak for the councils, that we, you know, fully back our police department, fire, EMS, and those that are there to protect our community, and you will, you will see that strongly voiced in the upcoming budget coming to Fisher's. So just thank you very much for that. Thank you for sharing your story. I'm very sorry that happened to you. There's just no place in any society for that, and unfortunately, it's visited our cities too often and our school buildings and everything else. So when you see police officers, remember that every time they walk up to a vehicle for even a seat belt violation, something simple as that, it can turn deadly in a second, or you're going to a parade, or you're in school, or you're wherever, something's really wrong in our homes and in our communities, and we need to make sure that we're banding together to stop that. So thank you. With that, motion to adjourn? Motion by Selena? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.